...contains 484 standards encompassing all facets of law enforcement, management, operations, and support functions. The Commission accredited this agency in 1997 after determining it had demonstrated its compliance with all applicable standards. The agency's proofs of compliance are on file at 228 South Main. Since then, the agency has attempted to maintain those standards. Our responsibility as assessors for the Commission is to revisit the agency and verify that it has remained in compliance since it was last accredited. Patrick Ulrich, the Chief of Bartlett Police Department, has appointed Lawrence Pinsak as the accreditation manager to oversee the reaccreditation process for this agency. In accordance with the Commission's public information policy, the agency's candidacy for reaccreditation has been publicized in this area, and the agency has arranged for this public hearing. The public hearing is intended to provide interested citizens or employees of the agency an opportunity to address this assessment team concerning the agency. Any comments that you make will be considered by us as we review the agency and will also be reported back to the Commission. If you wish to supplement your verbal comments with a written statement or exhibits, you may present them to our team at the time you speak, or you may send them to the Commission where they will be reviewed when the agency is presented for reaccreditation at a formal Commission conference. You may mail your written remarks to the Commission at the following address: The Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies, Inc., 13575 Heathcote Boulevard, Suite 320, Gainesville, Virginia 20155-6660. At the beginning of the meeting, a sign-in sheet was made available at the rear of this room. Those of you who indicated a desire to speak will be given an opportunity to address us in a few moments. We ask that you limit your comments to 10 minutes. If you wish to speak with any member of the Commission's staff, you may reach them at telephone number 703-352-4225. The Commission's staff representative for this agency is Dan Shaw. You may also email your comments to kalia@kalia.org, placing the agency name in the subject line. I would like to remind you that this meeting is being recorded, and the recording will be forwarded to the Commission for its review. Does anybody have any questions before we begin? Mayor Wallace, are you here?
Hello.
At the table, please, sir. Good evening.
Mayor Wallace could not be here this evening, so he's asked me, I trust Ray Dany, he's asked me, he has a prepared statement, and he's asked me to read that for him.
Okay.
So if I may proceed?
Please do.
Okay. The Bartlett Police Department was awarded its first Kalia accreditation in 1997, and I think there's been no looking back since. The entire department has embraced the national best practices of a Kalia program and committed itself to maintaining the very highest standards of law enforcement. I think one area in particular where the police department stands out is its interaction with the community. National Night Out and the lead-up events are a great example. At the annual Skate Park Bash, the department provides free food, music, and non-stop skating. But more importantly, this time spent interacting with Bartlett teens has had such a positive impact on the connections with this age group in our village. The mayor has also attended many of National Night Out block parties and seen firsthand how this builds support and trust between our residents and the police department. During a time when so many people are skeptical of the police, it is good to see our department doing everything that they can to make Bartlett a safer and more desirable place to live and work, and to cement the community's confidence in them. And there are so many other areas where our police department excels. In their long hours of ongoing training, in their participation in various task force across the region, our department goes to great lengths every day of the year to serve the community. In turn, I can say with confidence that the department has our full support in its efforts to retain the status of professional accreditation.
Thank you very much.
Now, on behalf of myself, I also have a statement I prepared. Again, I'm Ray Dany, trustee in the Village of Bartlett. Every time Bartlett goes through reaccreditation, it reflects the entire police department's ongoing commitment to professionalism. It shows in every detail of the department every day, from the attitude and behavior of the employees to the department's outreach efforts, to the appearance of the vehicles, to the police facility itself, our department always puts its best foot forward. I believe that when a police department consistently maintains the highest standards of law enforcement, as we do in Bartlett, the entire community reaps the benefits. Every stakeholder, resident, businesses, civics group, they all have a safer, stronger, and more responsive village when it comes to public safety. I think I can speak on behalf of the other Bartlett officials and staff when I say how proud we continue to be of our police department, not just because of what they do within the village, but because of the example they set throughout the law enforcement community. That's all I have this evening, and I want to thank you very much for your time, and I hope it's a favorable recommendation for the Bartlett Police Department.
Thank you very much. Charlie Devoe, did I pronounce that properly?
Yes, you did. Chief Sanders. Charlie Devoe, I've been a resident here in Bartlett since 98, and a homeowner since 2012. I want to speak about three particular incidents that I have, I don't want to say enjoyed, but I've had with the police department. The first one I had in February 2011, I lived in an apartment complex just across the street, and I had a noise disturbance issue. I ended up calling my landlord, he said, "Please call the police so we can put it on record." Two patrolmen showed up, asked me what happened, went over, and I pointed out the issue, and they took care of it very discreetly, but very honestly, and they came back and reported to me what happened. And I think one of the gentlemen was Officer Bramlett, and I bring his name up because three things happened with him. Seven months later, I was in an accident right in front of the village hall here, and Officer Bramlett gave me a ticket. It was my fault, but he was very honest and polite about the whole issue. And the third time was just Christmas of 2018, and again, this was an issue at the 7-Eleven on Lake Street, where there was a gentleman who tried to, he caused a ruckus with the owner of the 7-Eleven, and I happened to be there. He called 911, and the police department responded very quickly, and again, one of the officers was Officer Bramlett. But the whole incident was handled very professionally, and I felt very comfortable with explaining to them what happened and how they handled the situation. The other thing is they emphasized the National Nights Out, which the police department is very involved with, and it's nice to see them when they interact with the community and they participate, they have fun at these things, and they try and present themselves as approachable for the general public. And the other thing is at village board meetings, they'll have a sergeant-at-arms will be one of the patrolmen, and it's always nice to see these young guys, very professional. I'm a retired military, retired Navy, and it's always nice to go up and thank them for their service to the community, which I know surprises them when you explain that to them. But they're all very responsive, and it's a very responsive police department. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your military service. Mary Ann Kingsmell?
Hello, good evening. So I have somewhat of a unique situation. When I call 911, the sheriff's department comes out, because I live in an unincorporated area in Bartlett. But I wanted to come here tonight to show that even though I don't get directly serviced from the Bartlett Police, I've had many instances, whether it's through my employer, our business, or our family, that I have been able to create some relationships with the Bartlett Police. Through my employer, I was able to participate in the Citizens Police Academy. Throughout the eight weeks, we were able to get a glimpse of what some of the day-to-day operations were. Every night, a different team or staff member came in and spoke about their specialty. This experience allowed us, the public, to get a better understanding of the stresses that come with being a police officer. The Bartlett Police have also presented safety trainings within my work facility. Not only do they accommodate our schedule, but they always leave us with a reassurance that if we have any questions or concerns, we can call them and not hesitate to do so. I've had the opportunity to see the Bartlett Police interact with the community. My fiancee owns a business in Bartlett, which gives us the chance to be a part of these events by either donating food or our time. National Night Out is a week-long event that you've heard already about, that I've had the privilege of being a part of, whether it's at National Night Out or the Day of the Golf Event. I've witnessed the police officers engage with the community in such a manner that not only shows the community they care, but also allows the community to get to know them in a fun and relaxed setting. The Bartlett Police offer many opportunities for the community to get involved and informed. I was able to attend an active shooters event at the station, and through this presentation, I was able to learn about certain tourniquets that can be available if a situation were to occur. With this information, I'm in the process of buying them for my work facility, and I'm scheduling a time for a Stop the Bleed presentation. Services like this offer great benefits for those who live and work in Bartlett. The Chamber holds an annual softball event, and it's the village versus the Chamber members. For many years, the Bartlett Police have had several officers participate in that event. It just shows that they are willing to join in on town events also, and I'm not sure how good their record has been, but I have four children that have gone through the DARE program at their elementary schools. Two of them, they were chosen to read their essays at the graduation. While sitting at the graduation, it was amazing to see the relationships that they had formed between themselves and the students. The students were also told that they can visit the department anytime, to say hi to them when they're on the street, to wear their T-shirts, come and have a tour of the facility. I have a personal story that I would like to share. My former husband was diagnosed with cancer four years ago. He lived in Hanover Park and would have our nine-year-old son over for visitation. Since then, he's passed, but during his time of treatment, our son would be there by himself. I wanted to ensure our son that if he was scared or wasn't sure about something, that he can call 911. I thought he would feel more assured hearing it from an officer, so I reached out to his DARE officer and scheduled an appointment, and she sat down with him and had a wonderful conversation with him. Again, we don't live within the boundaries of their jurisdiction, but because the Bartlett Police engage with the community, I was able to feel that I could reach out to them and ask them to help me with something that was obviously very difficult. So I think it's apparent that the Bartlett Police, they're willing to serve everyone, whether you live in Bartlett or not. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your comments. Marty Sanchez?
Hello. Hi. My husband and I have lived in Bartlett for 27 years, and my husband and our neighbor friend got involved in the Citizens Police Academy. And the first night they came home, they said, "Marty, you gotta get involved in this. This is really a great class." And every night since that they went, "You gotta get involved in it." So really, okay, it wasn't something that was on my radar. And then Jeff Procallas was kind enough to email me an application because he was told that I would be coming in the next session, and it was really good. I was really impressed. Our kids are much older and aren't involved in the school district here, so we've got the library and the park districts that we were involved in, and we really don't have much contact with the police department until then. And I didn't have, I thought that my CPR skills were up to date, and they really weren't. And we were trained in CPR, we were taught about a lot of different issues that are going on in the village that we were completely unaware of. And not bad things, but just things regarding mental health calls that they get and resources that are available, how they're involved with the DARE program, and so on. I was very impressed, and we got to know quite a few of the officers. I got to learn how to shoot a gun, which turns out I have some aptitude for the, I think it was Kyle Raboski showed me how to shoot the gun, and told me to bring that little silhouette home to my husband and give it to him. We've had some small personal encounters. We live very close by, and I walk my dog, and I run into the officers on a regular basis as I try to wear him out. My young grandson and I were walking home from one of the local restaurants, and he had a, was given a train whistle, and he said, "I need to give this to one of the police officers to catch the bad guys." And right when he was saying that, a car came around the corner, and I flagged him down, and these two officers got out of the car, and they spent some time with him, and they took the whistle, and they told him how much they appreciated it and how they were going to use the whistle. They gave him a coupon for a very sugary drink at the 7-Eleven, which I really appreciated, and took pictures with him, and he was just, he was just so happy. It was just a really big deal for him, and it was great that they took the time out. And last night, we called over to the non-emergency number because there was a sinkhole in the street in front of our house, and a young officer came out and called over to the department that would handle filling this and putting up a barricade. And in the meantime, the neighbors brought their really young boys out, and he spent the time showing them the car. He didn't have any, he wasn't going anyplace until the barricades came, but he took the time to talk to the boys and show them the car and show them how the lights work, and these boys were thrilled. And I think they're two and three, and it really made their day. So we just have very positive contacts, and I can't say enough about the Citizen Police Academy. That's it.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Jerry Johnson?
Good evening. I'm Jerry Johnson, and been a resident of Bartlett since 2012, where we purchased the house to retire, which we've done. I have quite a large family. I have five children grown, two of them live in Bartlett with their families, and I have 11 grandchildren that my wife and I babysit from time to time in our house. And we live on a corner, so we have a nice, beautiful fence around it, and I thought that was enough to protect my grandchildren, my wife, my dog, from any outside element. But then I had an opportunity to join the police academy, as my friends did, and I was very surprised as to what we learned during that eight-week course. And upon our graduation, I wrote a little letter to the chief and Sergeant Radowski, and I'd like to just read that to you because it kind of puts everything in perspective. Until I retired about four years ago, I really didn't think too much about the Bartlett Police Department, but always felt that my family would be very safe in our neighborhood. Actually, when I saw the model on the side of their cars, "Serve with care and protect with confidence," it kind of rang out at me, saying, "This is a different type of force." Then the opportunity of attending the Citizen Police Academy came about, and I jumped at the chance, because I wanted to learn more about the policies, the practices, and the people involved in the department. I was not expecting that they would actually open their world to us and dedicate the time and effort to demonstrate the amount of training, knowledge, and emotions that it takes to provide safety to all the residents, businesses, and visitors to our community. So yes, we thank the men and women of the Bartlett Police Department for their timeless efforts in teaching us the CPR, giving us an overview of crisis prevention and evidence processing, and we even witnessed a crime in process and all the methods used to find and arrest that criminal. Experience the emotions of trying to make a traffic stop and not knowing who is in that driver's seat, and of course, the chance to meet Luther, our canine dog. And lastly, experiencing the emotion of use of force, and experience that even today, I'm still thinking about my actions. So yes, we thank the Bartlett Police Department, and we say a big thank you for allowing us into their world and a commitment of continuing to be law-abiding citizens. I, for one, will pledge to support this department in any way possible because they support us as residents, businesses, and any visitor that come into our community. That's it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for allowing me to speak this afternoon on behalf of the professionalism excellence and community involvement of the Bartlett Police Department. As a 35-year resident of Bartlett, excuse me, as well as a trustee of the Bartlett Fire Protection District, I have been very actively involved in this community. I feel I can speak with confidence on this topic. In the next couple of minutes, I hope to be able to share with you why I strongly believe that the Bartlett Police are more than worthy of continuing their accreditation. Let me begin by talking about a few of the ways they reach out and interact with our residents every year. In the late spring, they host the DARE Family Fishing Derby. This event is well-attended, and it gives children and adults a chance to meet some of the officers on a neutral site. Additionally, in the spring, they host their annual Open House, which gives residents a better understanding of what goes on behind the scenes and what is all entailing in their job. At the Fourth of July Fest, the police can be found walking around, meeting people, handing out promotional items, and simply interacting with our residents in a positive light. As was mentioned before, coming up in the next couple of weeks will be National Night Out. Instead of simply hosting this Tuesday night event, they host an extended weekend leading up to the National Night Out. Block parties, judging of the block parties, bike rides, skate park events, and then this all culminates on Tuesday with a thousand or more people at the National Night Out event. The common theme of these four or five days is the police purposely interacting with the community. We all know the value of a strong relationship. In this case, the police and the community they serve all agree on the importance of this relationship. This will be the 26th year that the Bartlett Police are hosting this event. Social media is a part of our everyday lives. The Bartlett Police have used this very effectively to the benefit of the residents and those who work here. Be it for traffic alerts, neighborhood watch info, or even a lost pet, their content is timely, informative, and often in a lighthearted fashion. Other examples of their effort to reach out to the community are their lip sync challenge and the cop on a rooftop to benefit Special Olympics. These are all examples of how the Bartlett Police Department make every effort to personalize their service to the community. While community interaction is certainly important, being the best at your job is even more important. In talking with a number of the police officers, I know that great emphasis is placed on extensive training for all of their personnel. As a key component of professionalism, the Bartlett Police make every effort to continue to better their officers, their CSOs, and their administrators. One more example of the police department, community involvement, was a presentation for churches and businesses on an active shooter. I was involved with that presentation as a member of my church. That presentation allowed us to begin the process of preparing our faith community in the event of such an incident. I mentioned earlier that I've been a trustee with the Bartlett Fire Protection District for 12 years. In that time, the working relationship, excuse me, between the two agencies has grown significantly, all to the benefit of the community. The frequency of emergency calls that require the interaction of both agencies seems to grow every year. As such, we address the need for preparedness by training together to ensure that we maximize the interoperability at an incident. From the fire district's perspective, I can state that our partnership with the PD produces better outcomes and greater efficiencies every day for our residents. This is another example of how both agencies value professionalism. In closing, I want you to know that I reviewed the Kalia accreditation standards prior to writing my comments. So it is without any reservation and with every confidence that I urge you to renew the Kalia accreditation of the Bartlett Police Department. They have earned this in every sense and are absolutely deserving of this honor. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Mike Warden?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm Mike Warden. My family moved here to Bartlett September 16, 1961. The town was only 1,500 people, and ironically, Bartlett Police Chief Lloyd lived around the corner from us in the same neighborhood, so we always felt very safe. We always knew them because they would go to block parties and things like that, so we, my interface with the police department was very positive from a very young child onward. I think it's very impressive that there are 484 standards and that only 4% of the departments across the U.S. have this. Bartlett has had very high professional and financial standards for a long time, and I think it's impressive that this has been ongoing and that we've had it since 1997. My mother died when I was in high school at age 16. I was 16 in '76, and my father started declining mentally after that, and he retired in 1980. Well, by '84, he had Well, by '84, he had Alzheimer's. There were times when I had to take the night shift at UPS to work around his roaming times. I had a friend that would stay overnight, but he had to leave at 5:30 in the morning to go to work. And sometimes I would come home from UPS anywhere between 8:30 and 11:00 in the morning, and my father would be gone. And I would go to the police department to see if he was there or report him missing. There were times when they had picked him up because he was roaming. He had worked for the railroad for 39 years, and he would get up and think it was time to go to work, and then he couldn't find the train station. And so the police would pick him up, and sometimes they would bring him home for me, and other times, they would call me and tell me that they had him. So it was a very positive situation with the police department. I saw their caring, high level of competency at a very young age also. I work for the Illinois Department of Revenue. I'm in a different type of law enforcement. I'm in tax law enforcement. I'm a revenue collection officer. Part of our duty is not only to enforce compliance, but to encourage it. And I see that with the Bartlett Police Department also, sometimes with unmanned police cars to try to encourage people to obey the speed limit. So it's not that they're out there just trying to stamp on people or try to force them to comply, but they're trying to encourage compliance. And let's face it, you get a lot more flies with honey than you do with vinegar. And I think that's a very positive thing for them. Bartlett is a very positive place to live, and you've heard a lot of things about National Night Out. And they are very visible for that. They have a lot to do with it, and it's very proud, I'm very proud to say that I live in Bartlett and that I have such a fine police force. I'm active with things. I've been on the zoning board for 40 years. I've been an election judge for almost 40 years. I'm a life member of the Historical Society. I see a lot of things happen in Bartlett, and the Bartlett Police are not a tarnish at all. They are a very good enhancement to our village, and I certainly hope that you are able to accredit them once again because they are a very fine force and deserving of it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your comments. Did I say that properly?
Close, Cosio.
Okay.
We only put the L there to confuse everyone.
Okay.
Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight.
Certainly.
My name is George Cosio, and I reside at 654 Hazel Nut Court, Bartlett, Illinois. I am a 32-year resident and have been active in a number of activities since 1990. I am a 19-year member of our Zoning Board of Appeals. When I looked at the Kalia standards, I was amazed by the number of and detail of items that are being taken into consideration in the review process. For the most part, I am unable to address many of these points. Instead, I will mention things that I have observed over the many years that I think are positive signs of the commitment of the police to make Bartlett a better community. I will mention items that I have noticed and are important to me as a resident served by the officers of the Bartlett Police Department. My first contact with the police had to be when a neighborhood watch was coming into existence. It was interesting to see a couple of officers step up and rally residents to participate in the program. My wife and I had a chance to work with several officers and even become friends. The officers involved managed to get residents from all of Bartlett together to form groups that watched over the communities in which we lived. People rallied around the officers, and we became more than just residents and police. Then there was the Dare Program. That was another organization that was established to introduce police to the children in our schools. This is an amazing group of officers, proud to serve with parents, teachers, and students. Coming together is very important for the good of all. I have had the privilege of seeing several officers continue their relationships with residents and businesses in town. I have seen officers grow and take on more responsibilities, moving through the ranks to higher and higher levels of command. I think it is important for the residents to see that our police officers are being promoted from within. I personally know of one officer working with children in a safety and awareness program called Tammy Town. Tammy Town was a traveling town geared toward keeping children safe in their community at home and from school. Officer Tammy offered children a unique opportunity to role-play with her various safety scenarios. This is another example of police officers going above and beyond in establishing a strong relationship with the citizens. We should hold up these efforts as examples of the best of our police, for which we are very proud. On a lighter note, I'd like to say that there were a number of police officers that engaged in a carpool karaoke in the police cruiser that rallied many residents to respond to online viewings. It was amazing to see the support these officers received from our citizens. It may sound a little silly, but this is a good way of showing that the police are real people, too. They do like having fun. Not all police officers are always stone-cold serious. I know of many officers continued their education while serving. In my mind, this stands out as a continuation of the excellence and professionalism that is exhibited in our police force. It is very important for us to have a well-educated police force. I have heard that this is an ongoing and is important that we recognize these officers for their accomplishments. It is always amazing and encouraging to see the police interacting with the residents at any number of community gatherings. There are always a number of adults and children surrounding and engaging with the police officers. I think that establishing good relationships like this is important to having a first-class police department. The officers work hard to establish and grow these relationships. I think that the residents hold the police at a high level of respect and friendship at the same time. There are many officers and many happenings over the years that I could mention. I think I have stated enough to give you an idea of how lucky we are to have a very professional and dedicated police force. In closing, I have to tell you a story that impressed me when two officers went above and beyond the call to duty to help a resident last winter. A man called to report that his wedding ring was lost in a snowbank while he was delivering pizza. Two officers got together and took on the problem and were determined to help the resident. Two officers knew that the department owned a metal detector. They acted quickly to take the detector to the location and began what sounded like an impossible task, trying to find the proverbial needle in a haystack. Their determination and perseverance paid off. They found the ring. I think this is a wonderful example of how much the police are willing to do for those they serve. Bartlett has many police officers like this. So much of what they do isn't highly spoken about because they would say that they are just doing their jobs. I may not have addressed specific items in the Kalia standards. Even so, I hope that it is important that you take these items into consideration. In many ways, I am proud to say, "Job well done, Police Department, Bartlett, Illinois." Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm Sue Allen. I am the lead pastor at Living Lord Lutheran Church here in Bartlett, and I am also the Fire Department Chaplain. In over 30 years of ministry, I've served many different communities and interacted with people from many different departments in those communities. I've been here in Bartlett for over 10 years, and I can say that this has been a joy. The community is amazing, and it goes to show that the people that are here serving in public service have done a wonderful job. More of the incidents that I would talk about are sort of behind the scenes, I guess, not things very public like the Dare Program or National Night Out. But I know that annually, our mayor invites the leaders of the religious communities here in Bartlett to get together, and most often, our police chief and one or more of his staff are with him, there to interact, answer questions, and provide information. It was at one of those meetings where the religious community continued to question things about what we could do as far as our faith communities in preparing for things in the community that led to development of the active shooter engagement that they already had done with small businesses, and many religious and faith leaders came to those also. But even more than that, just recently, in following in that same thread, I will be meeting later this week with participants from not only Bartlett Police, but the Fire Protection District as we develop a template together to distribute to the faith communities for emergency operation plans to put in place with their blessing and something that we can all use to make our community a better place. Our Bartlett Police Department is receptive to working together. I've seen them so often, especially with the Bartlett Fire Protection District in responding to incidents that are within the community, but also in informal ways, supporting each other. They're there voluntarily to attend retirement walkouts or promotion ceremonies, offering their support and showing that this is a community that gets along together and provides services together. Personally, through my own congregation, they've been so receptive and helpful. Several years, we've had large concerts at Christmas time, inviting in nationally-known artists, and as we do that, we've informed the police department that there would be several hundred people that we didn't necessarily know coming through our doors. They voluntarily came and drove the parking lots and the areas, offered suggestions on how to manage the crowd, and were there and knew what was happening to be on sight. Thank goodness, nothing happened, but that's okay. We had the assurance, and we could assure the artists that were there, that we were being looked after. As we do all of these things together in our community, it just goes to show, everybody that can work together can continue to make the place better for everyone involved. Thanks for your help, for your support, and as they pursue additional accreditation, we're here to offer them our support in whatever way we can. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening.
Hi.
My name's Dan Palmer. I was invited to come here and say some nice things about the Bartlett Police Department. Actually, they just invited me, but I do have nice things to say on my own. How can I not? Bartlett is where I started in 1979, and I would witness and was part of the growth as it grew from 12 to 56 officers until when I left in 2011. I sat where Chief Ulrich is now sitting, and I have to tell you, this is a little better spot from my point of view. It began with the department's first foray into accreditation and through four succeeding accreditations. I'm proud to see what the Bartlett Police Department has become and how it has maintained its professional excellence. It's a great thing to see, and it's still important to me because I still reside in the community as an active member. Accreditation in Bartlett has always been marked by a commitment to comply with the best practices in policing. The many standards are designed to ensure this excellence. I know and I have seen this commitment that continues to this day with a bunch of new and motivated young officers, most of which I don't even recognize from far away anymore. Bartlett has always been and continues to be leaders in Kalia. As we know, all of law enforcement helps each other out, whether it be mutual aid or just sharing policy. My most recent afterlife has led me to a town to stabilize, fix, mentor, and prepare them for their future. To that end, their policies were atrocious and the dollars are scarce. Of course, Bartlett stepped in and provided me with their policies, as well as some assistance in a few other areas, most recently, an active shooter training for our village staff. I don't have the luxury of any staff up there, so being able to rely on Bartlett and their policy manual was very instrumental to allowing me to get on board and set those policies right from the get-go. They're thorough, they're extensive, more importantly, they're compliant with the best policy ideas that exist in law enforcement. They contain much more than I need, actually, and all I need to do is really scale them back and put our name on it. Bartlett has always been focused on Kalia fully and all of the time. Their commitment shows by the continued full-time position for a person dedicated to keeping up compliance as well as other planning and research activities. Having sat in a village manager's office with her one-time assistant, who is now the village manager, I can attest that the village in its entirety, including the board, is on board with more than just the word accreditation. The commitment is very true and very real. In closing, it's important that I call out one specific member who is no longer with the Bartlett Police Department, having recently retired. When I left, I gave just a few pieces of advice. One of these bits was to just leave Nora the heck alone, although I might have used a different word other than heck. Nora makes all things right with accreditation. Make no mistake, the officers and staff are the ones who execute the vision, but Nora was the one who tied it all up and made it look very pretty. She made me and my successor chiefs look good. I think Kalia agrees that she was a recent appointee as one of your compliance service members. A great big hat tip to Nora and to Kalia for allowing this department to shine all these years. Bartlett has never just obtained accreditation, they've lived and breathed it. From my viewpoint, they continue to not only comply with the standards, they live and practice them, which after all is what this is all about. Thank you, chiefs.
Thank you very much. Hi.
Thank you for being here. I don't have a prepared speech, I just want to speak from my heart. My husband and I moved to Bartlett 42 years ago, and we have been active in every aspect that there possibly can be, every little group, every little nook and cranny, and we watched the police department grow from maybe a handful to what we have today. They've always been very personal and extremely professional. We have a son that is a little bit on the spectrum of needs, and the community service officers that they have here are aware of him. They see him riding his bike all the time back and forth to work because he's not able to drive. They've been extremely patient with him, but they've never interfered in his personal space. The policemen purposely allow him to be himself, but are very respectful about it. The atmosphere that they have shown to the residents of Bartlett, and it really starts with the Dare Programs, because these children are very, very young, and when they get to see and feel comfortable with the police department as they grow older, I think that it has helped to keep a tamper down on any gang involvements that may occur because it seems to be a very safe and comfortable community. I can't imagine living anywhere else, and I was born and raised in Chicago. So, big contrast from there to here. But the gentlemen that are on the police force, if they're not around, we miss them, and we wonder if something's happened to them. The chief and all of his staff are extremely dedicated people, and I hope that you will continue to see what they have given to us and what we people want to give back to them. Please, give them that accreditation. They deserve it.
Thank you very much for your comments. I'm not sure if this is Ted or Jed.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's Ted.
And I can't, I can't. What is your last name, sir? I'm not sure if this is Ted or Jed. And I can't, I can't... What is your last name, sir?
I was right after Ted. Ted Lewis.
Ted Lewis, okay, great. Thank you.
I want to thank you for giving me this opportunity to talk a little bit. My wife, my two sons, and I moved to Bartlett 43 years ago, so I think we're the oldest group in town here, at least the ones here talking. And we saw Bartlett double and double again and again, and the police department not only grew in manpower, but it grew as professionals. More training, more education, and they are the epitome, I think, of a very small-town police force. It's not so much a small town anymore. I'm also the Park District Commissioner for the last 30 years, and the DARE program, their fishing derby that they have, they're working at the skate park. The fishing derby is for the very young children and their families, and they have the tweens and they have the teens, and it's all run by the police with the help of the Park District. They work, I'm also a member of the Lions Club. They work with the Lions Club for, their yearly open house is coordinated with the Lions Club for their pancake breakfast. The annual 4th of July parade, the police department works with the county, they work with the Public Works Department, they work with the Park District, they work with the neighbors when they put up the signs, "It's no parking while we're putting 100 units in place and in line." And I've seen nothing but positive attitudes in that. I, no, I'm repeating DARE and I'm repeating, well, open house, nobody said about, but that's one of the things that the town looks forward to, especially the kids, when they have their Sunday open house. And their National Night Out, it's more than just the National Night Out, they have the neighborhood night outs first. So they work with subdivisions and they work with neighborhoods, and then they have the Bartlett National Night Out. They work with the Park District, they work with the neighbors around the park that it goes in, they work with the Chamber of Commerce, and every one of those organizations has nothing but good things to say about the police department. So I will hope that you will consider this and continue their recognition for another three years. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Ann Varell?
Hello.
Hi.
My name's Ann Varell, and my husband and son and I have lived in Bartlett for a little bit over 20 years. My son has been through, he's in his 20s now, so he started out with the DARE, and then in high school, Officer Bosch was his, well, the police officer stationed in the high school, and so had got to do a lot of things with Officer Bosch, because he was really involved with the students and at the sporting events and all of those things, and kind of helped the high school kids feel a little friendlier about police officers being around. And then just recently, in the last couple of years, I've gotten more involved with the police as a graduate of the 2017 Citizens Police Academy, where I learned a lot of details about the enormous amount of training that our police officers go through. A lot of things they do on their own time, not just on the clock, above and beyond the standards that are expected of them. And one thing that struck me extremely important was that Bartlett is one of the very first communities that has psychological help on staff permanently, which is uncommon. This woman helps the police with their own dealing with situations that they encounter on the job, as well as going on calls for mental well-being checks and those types of situations. And this person is called upon to assist with some of those and to help with family members that might be affected by some of those calls. After I was finished with the academy, I had the opportunity to do an overnight ride-along, and one of those calls happened to be of a domestic situation, which really opened my eyes as to how these officers responded to the situation with so much caring and concern and just for everybody involved. I was just, my eyes were opened so wide, that these people care so much about the positive outcomes. I know a lot of my family from out of state thinks the police have a bad rap. They do these days, and when I say, you know what, you should come here and watch our police department, there's no better police department in the nation as far as I'm concerned. Their professionalism, their ongoing training, and the amount of caring that they provide to the community and the community involvement. This was my first year being on the Bartlett 4th of July Committee, where there's a four- or five-day-long fest involving the police, obviously, as far as EMT and just crowd-control security, and every single police officer on the force is working pretty much the whole festival, patrolling the town, and they really get along great with the community. Also with the National Night Out, you know, they're giving so much of their time and getting involved with all of the community, you know, from kids up to elderly people, and it's really showing that they are sincere, professional, caring individuals, and we know that they're there to protect us, as well as interact with the community. They're great people, hold themselves to extremely high standards. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Al Piyash?
Hiya.
Sorry.
Good evening.
Hi.
My name is Al Piyak, and I am the Environmental Health and Safety Manager for Ron-A-Mil Solutions, which is a business here in Bartlett. We have over 500 employees, we run 24 hours a day, seven days a week, we're a very busy operation. I've been there for about four and a half years now. In that time, we've had several occasions to call the police and ask for help, and the officers have always been very personable, professional, response times are great, whether it was something as serious as, you know, an assault or a disgruntled terminated employee who refused to leave the property, to a vandalized car, to a stolen purse, the response was always the same, very professional. We have always had positive interactions with the Bartlett Police, always. Their recent active shooter seminar that they had for local businesses was very informative. That actually dovetails very well with us. We're in the middle of doing our Workplace Violence and Aggression Training, and we are soon to move into our active shooter training, and the Bartlett Police have already said they will assist us with that, looking forward to that. I've had occasions to talk to Chief Ulrich in the past, typically very minor questions, I'll send him an email with something. It's obviously that Chief Ulrich sets the standard for his officers from the top down, because rather than getting a reply from one of his administrators or having him pass the email off to somebody else, my phone is ringing within minutes with a personal call back, and he's giving me whatever help that I need. I can also say, as a personal aside, I've worked the bingo tent at the 4th of July celebration for the last two years, not as a representative of RONA, but as a private citizen. And it amazes me, as I see the interactions with the officers, how many of the citizens know the officers by name, but also how the officers know so many of the citizens by name. As someone who just works in Bartlett and, you know, doesn't see the officers as often, from what I have seen, it's very obvious that they're very involved with the community. And again, as a business representative, we wholly support their reaccreditation in Kalia. Anything that we could do, I am glad to be here to speak, and anything we can do to help, I would certainly be glad to do that. And I would like to say thank you to Chief Ulrich for the help that he has given us over the years. I'd like to say that we never have to call the police, but it's nice to know that when we do, they will always be there for us. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Rita Lapienski?
Hello.
Hi.
I'm President of Arts in Bartlett, and I'm going to have five examples of how the Bartlett Police Department interacts with community clubs and nonprofit organizations. I do want to recommend them for reaccreditation for exemplary community service and engagement. My first example, and I've lived in Bartlett for 29 years. My first example as President of Arts in Bartlett, the police department's been involved with us since our founding 16 years ago. We do an annual two-day festival, arts festival, and it was just a month ago, and they are always there very casually around the grounds during the event, but in particular, I can picture this year where the officers were actually really interacting, tasting the, it was a global arts festival theme the last three years, tasting the food, putting on some of the costumes of our Taiwanese group, and actually, they're in the Chinese newspapers. Have you seen a copy of that yet? Yeah, it got into the Chinese TV and newspapers with the police officers interacting with the group. They've always done a really good job with us. And in 2010, Arts in Bartlett was involved with the Village of Bartlett in setting up a Sister City International with Meili, Taiwan, and every year, we have one or two events going on. We often have a Taiwanese group here at Village Hall performing, and it's, in the audience, there's always members of the police department participating, enjoying, and being a part of that, which means a lot to us. We'll be celebrating our 10-year anniversary next year, and we've already had some meetings about how we will celebrate that. The support of nonprofits in other ways, many years ago, we had Bartlett Character Counts, and I was a part of that board, and at every monthly meeting, we had either the police chief or one of the officers there at the meetings just being a part of that group. I'm a member of Bartlett Women's Club, and almost once a year, we have a member from the police department either doing a program on scams, fraud, or even the K-9 program that they have. And personally, about 16 years ago, my kids' first summer home alone at age 11 and 12, and Dan Palmer was a part of this one, our house was broken into while me and my husband were working. This is their first home, time at home in the summer. We had trained them what to do, but they got nervous with some people knocking on the front and back doors, and I told them to call 911, and a few minutes later, actually, they heard glass breaking, and they ran upstairs and hid and called 911. In a few minutes, a good part of the police force was there. By that time, two young, two youth gang members were upstairs closer where my kids were, and they apprehended them. What, the Bartlett Police Department was wonderful in calming my kids, taking care of them before we could even, you know, arrive, and securing the house, checking the whole house out, and I think the best part that came of it was, a few days later, was actually National Night Out, and they'd started their first Youth Citizens Award and gave each of my kids a plaque for their bravery in apprehending home burglars, which the kids proudly have. I think it was a life-changing experience for them, and if you could think of such a traumatic thing happening to young kids, they were comforting, and actually, if it's possible, it was actually a rewarding experience for them, as they are successful, confident young adults who are forever grateful to the Bartlett Police Department.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody here that wishes to speak that did not sign in? Okay, on behalf of, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I was just yelling at the elbows.
Oh.
Hello.
Hi. My name is Carlos Sanchez. My wife Marty was up earlier, I think she was talking to you about how good of a shot she was when she went through the course, so that's why I'm up here now, so. No, I just, it's great to hear what everyone has had to say today, but, and I can't, I really can't add more to all the experiences that everyone here has had. I went through the Citizens Police Academy course, and it was a wonderful eight-week course. The one thing that I was able to really be impressed by is every time, every week, you had a different instructor come in or someone to come in and talk to us about, you know, that chapter, whether it be the detectives or one of the patrolmen's or the tactical team. The one thing that I was able to get out of these courses was, they were there because they wanted to be there. They weren't there because they had to be there. That's an emotion that you can't fake. You could try. I've worked for Allstate for many years, and I've had to do things, and I can't fake when I don't want to be at a certain place doing something, even if it's for the corporate good. But that's the one thing that I picked up more than anything else with Jeff and his entire team. Everyone that was in these courses and providing the training, they wanted to be there, and you could tell that they wanted to be there. Just like the gentleman said before, as far as the 4th of July, they were interacting with the people, they knew me, one of the officers knew who I was. We've lived in the area for many years, you just can't fake that. It just can't be done. But thank you again for your time.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? If not, I'd like to say thank you on behalf of the Commission for all of your comments. We will be sure and forward your comments to them for consideration when they go before the Commission for their reaccreditation. So it looks like it's 6:10, and so we will be adjourned. Thanks again.
I have to do these.